Or outside. Town hall. A lot. And I would. Like to open the the meeting to public comment. I can't really see people. So I'm going to ask Mark to identify people.
Okay. Mr. Boyd would like to speak. So.
Where do you want me to stand?
Right over here, the usual.
So they can pick me up and tell me.
Yeah, I'll get you. There you go. Oh, okay.
I was gonna raise hell about the. About the folks sitting in their cars. But they're not sitting in their cars. I did get some advice from committee on open government. She actually. Raised the examples that is very, very close in her opinion. Her name is Kristen Smith, and she's on the staff committee of open government. I had an email from her. And she actually used the example that, well, if they set up a tent outside, they'd probably be okay. If they sat in their cars, they probably wouldn't. So they have the equivalent of a tent. So so be it. I am curious about the water resource overlays and maybe I have been remiss in doing my homework. Or paying attention. A lot of people have approached me and said, what's going on with the water resource overlay? In that they seem so far more restrictive. Than anything that is put out by the. Army Corps of Engineers, the New York Department of Conservation or any of that. There are a lot of people who are very, very threatened by that. Perhaps their. Homeowner's insurance will go up because they're seated in a flood plain or something. I don't know. I'm just kind of reporting. What I've been hearing. So at the very least, I would appreciate as much clarification as zoning commission would be willing to offer on this. My opinion is, like so much of this stuff, it's. Probably not necessary, but I'd like to hear from the zoning commission. A little more about water resource overlays. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
And I'll go outside with a tent. As long as I can see and hear well enough from out there. I'll stay out there. I don't know whether I'm not sure what I think. I mean, but I'll say this. I'm sitting facing Bill and Michelle, so I can't see the computer screens. So it might be difficult for me.
But you can attend from in here if you'd like.
I could attend from in here, but but the point of meeting the quorum test with those folks out there, the necessary four people that comprise the forum. Would be that somebody could participate at one of these other locations.
But observe. Yeah, so.
Well, observe the meeting, which includes in here. See, that's where it's starting to get.
Okay. Thank you, Pete. Renee Pharaoh.
Anyone else who wants to make public comment?
Nobody's here at the town hall. Renee Pharaoh has her hand up in Zoom. Yeah.
Renee, please speak.
It's you're not muted yet. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to spend about three minutes following up on the discussion that happened last at your last meeting. In regards to commercial. Some of the commercial sites that you were actually considering. And I wanted to just, I I mentioned this site actually quite a while ago, and it seemed to have been dropped, and then it. Was mildly picked up again. But the area in East Slatorville, I was actually driving out of town and kind of noticing. Just the development there specifically of larger commercial establishments like gaggle. And I'm just wondering, I really am definitely for. Commercial development. I think it would be healthy for our community. I think it would bring in tax-based dollars. Either, you know, immediately or in the long term. And I just think that having a designated area. That is really quite, you know, far from neighborhoods and from housing and from children playing in their yards is a is a prudent thing. And so I just wanted to say, I just keep looking at that area beyond East Slatorville and thinking it just seems like a natural. Place for really interested individuals who wanted to do small-scale commercial development to do it there. I've been looking, I'll just add that I was. In an area in East, I think it's East Lansing. It's where the UPS places. And I just happened to drive beyond that site, and there's all these amazing small commercialized. Establishments that have sprung up in that particular area, also away from residential, away from schools, away from. And I just think it might be prudent to maybe look at what other small communities are doing. And so I can recommend what's happening in Lansing out on, I don't, I can't remember the road out past the UPS store. And then there was another one I was thinking of, and I just can't think of it right now, but I just highly, you know, encourage you. To start really thinking about that because. It's going to happen. People are going to want to do that kind of development, and if we don't have some kind of. Areas that they can do that, I think it's it will not serve our community at all. So anyway, just thinking about that. I I mentioned it before. I just want to mention again. Have fun.
You're muted, Jean. You're you're still muted, Jean.
Sorry. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comments this evening?
I'll just make an appeal for anybody that wishes to speak to raise their brown Zoom hand. If they wish to. I'm not seeing anything.
Okay, there are none. We will go on with the agenda. The first thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of August 1st, August 16th, and August 30th. We approve the minutes of August 1st, but I have sent out some that have a slight correction in them. To the members. Would anyone like to move those? And also of August 16th, similarly, a slight correction.
Not the, no. So I'll certainly move the August 1st minutes.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I will second.
Okay. Thank you. Any others? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes. August 16th with the corrections.
So Jean, I I think maybe it's just me, but when I look at those, I'm not seeing. August 16th. I'm seeing stuff that's still copied from August 1st. Maybe my copy is garbled somehow. Does everybody else have good copies from August 16th? Or is it just me?
I think I what I sent out two days ago, I thought was the corrected copy.
No, it does need the addition that Michelle suggested about the. One other motion.
Yes, and I thought I had put that in.
You missed the second.
Corrected version.
You missed the second motion about the lot lot size, taking away the lot size.
Ah. Um. Okay, Michelle, can you give me that about the lot size? And I will then add that.
I don't have it in front of me, but it was. Bill made a motion. Sorry, we're getting an echo because. Is it because we're next to each other? Anyway. Bill made a motion that we eliminate the lot size requirement. And it passed unanimously.
Yes, I remember that. I can find that. Okay, with that addition. Michelle, would you add, would you move these?
I moved that we make that addition to the August 16th minutes.
Thank you. And then do I have a second to move these?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question? Was that in the August 16th minutes to eliminate the? Minimum lot size was to eliminate the minimum lot size in a conservation subdivision, not?
Right, correct.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
I I snipped that. I snipped that out, everybody.
Yeah, I saw that. I just wanted to make sure that I I got it right.
Okay. I will make that addition. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. Those pass, and I don't know if people had a chance to read the August 30th one.
I did, and despite your great trepidation, I think they are fine as written.
Great. So I'm taking it that you are moving those?
I I will move those, but I don't know. Maybe the people have problems with them.
Anyone have a second? Thank you, Barbara. Please, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Those all pass. I'm so happy. Okay, so we go on with the agenda. I. And Murray, the councilman's report.
I don't have much to report, but I want to just assure everyone that the. Current configuration of the Sunday Commission meeting. Meets quorum. It's in keeping with the Town and Caroline video conferencing policy. It was passed June 8th, 2022. Which is in line with Public Officers Law. 102. And Town and Caroline Local Law. Two of 2022. So. There seems to have been some confusion about that, but. And the forum is. Needed to have four people. In person or online, having announced in advance where they were going to be online. And.
You can email to me, or I will. I think we'll probably have Mark follow up with them. I think it's a great thing to make sure we cut clear.
Go, your 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 mic is live.
Apologies for that.
That's all I have.
You're muted again, Jean. You're muted, Jean.
Jean, unmuted.
Yeah, Jean, can you hear me? We're not reading you.
Under a chat.
Yes, I'm sorry. It's about the hamlet and the town and the hamlet of Caroline. In the agenda, there is the definition of hamlet. And I believe that Nan has now added that to our definitions. And what we we made a decision at the last meeting about the east and west borders of the hamlet of. Caroline. But we have an issue about we we wanted to look more at. The prime lands in that area. And I know that Bill has looked at that map and Nan has looked at that map, so I'm going to ask one of you to. To explain what's going on there, and we'll try to make a decision about what we should do there.
Okay, I have. I mean, I'm happy to share my screen, and then then I can take turns talking, but I, on the definition of hamlet, I had made some suggested changes. I don't know if those got incorporated. I I didn't follow up. I'm sorry.
I think they did get incorporated.
Okay.
I'll check.
That makes me feel good. All right, let me try to share a screen.
You should be able to, Bill.
Yeah. All right, so what you are looking at is the Caroline area. The green is the hamlet boundary we first looked at. The yellow with a couple of options is something that I proposed, and I just want us to sort of discuss the merits and decide. What to do. There is a slight change on the western border, which I agree we sort of decided to have the western border where it was, but it made sense to me to move it in a little bit. So let me walk you through this. There is a lot of prime farmland in this area, and so one goal I certainly have is to try to. Keep as much of that prime farmland in the ag rural district, which seems to have the the best setup for it. And. What this does is try to do the best job at cutting. The minimum number of parcels that is putting the minimum number of parcels in more than one zone. Yet maximizing the farmland that is in the ag rural zone. And also with an eye towards where buildings are, which is as I remarked, roughly within three to 350 feet of the roadway is where most people wind up building. It makes a certain amount of sense. And if you look at Slatorville Springs, it's similar. So this line, let me zoom in a bit more. So if you look at the north border. This parcel here has some prime farmland in it, and it is basically not, I think it, yeah, it's basically not attached to Route 79. I'm I'm trying to raise a cursor around it, but I don't have a great bright cursor. Sorry, you see that thing sort of wiggling? It's the easternmost tall parcel.
Okay, yeah.
And there's an isolated parcel up here that I said I thought we might not include, but you notice that the red lines are the parcel bodies. So for the most part, the proposed hamlet boundary follows existing parcel boundaries. Until you get to a few deeper ones here, that some of which are being actively farmed. So on the western part. It's sort of unavoidable. Either we cut the parcels, or we do as the original thing does, which is take all the way to the town border. And I'm okay with the solution, but that was one alternate. As you move to the western side here, let's see if I can get us over there. There was a parcel here included that I didn't, other than maybe leaving room for future expansion, didn't seem to merit it, and I think I didn't draw, and there actually is a parcel boundary here. I forgot to draw that western. So this parcel is not. Does not contain this part here. This is the cemetery. And, you know, it's possible to delete this piece or keep this piece. And then the other main question is on the western border, whether there's any reason to jump over the roadway here. Because doing that cuts this northernmost parcel, it includes this parcel, it cuts the next parcel down, cuts the next parcel down, cuts the next parcel down, and then all to include one more parcel here. So to me, it was little. Reason to include that territory in Caroline Hamlet. This is really sort of the center of the Hamlet. So. And that was my thinking. And then on the other south border, it was just to pull things in. Again, it does match some borders of existing parcels as best it can. These first several parcels in the sort of middle section are all very deep parcels. With good farmland and being farmed. So where there was a parcel boundary to follow, that's what I did, and where I had to cut it, that's what I did. So that's my rationale for what I did. There are other ways to draw this, but that's. Was my thinking, was a way of maximizing, you know, getting the good prime farm soil into the ag rural district.
So can I ask a question, Jean?
Yes, please go ahead.
So Bill, if you could, wait, go back to the west side by the Cecil Keen Lane.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A bit more so that we, yeah, there you go. So I was just wondering why not include that little parallelogram area. To the left of the C in the sense of future, you know, future expansion of the hamlet.
So you're talking on the other side of the road, Barb, this stuff in here?
South, on the south side of 79. Because. You know, to allow for expansion of the hamlet, it's along 79. It doesn't have, I don't believe, from this now prime agricultural soil, prime farmland soils. I think we're saying that what will be allowed in this hamlet is similar to Caroline Center, which does allow, you know, some some types of small businesses. So I'm just wondering, you know, that it would be providing for future growth.
I mean, I think that's fine. Again, my, and I'm happy to expand. My initial thing was what's what would be the most compact thing? And what we're trying to do to some extent is is recognize the historic. Position of the Caroline area in the town. And so, you know, here here it is. And I wasn't necessarily looking at at. You know, making room for future growth. That wasn't the goal, whereas that was definitely a goal for some of the hamlets. It is fine to make that a goal. That just wasn't mine. If we did that, what I would suggest. Is go ahead and include maybe perhaps all of this parcel out to the the northernmost part, south of the road, all the way to its edge.
Right.
So you would avoid cutting that parcel into two zones.
Right.
You are stuck with this one. It's kind of a big parcel, and then there's a it's a really long rectangle, like skinny guy. I'd probably put all of that in 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 the hamlet as well, and then I'd be totally fine with that.
So how about if I move that as a as a change to this diagram?
Okay. So Barb is moving acceptance of Bill's map with the with addition on on the south, the. Western border.
I don't think there's a way for me to draw on this. I, oh, maybe this.
Before we vote on something, maybe we can kind of. Put all the pieces together, one. One, one new map. So a question I have is 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 just, it comes to mind that. You know, we're splitting a number of parcels here, and this isn't unique, but what happens when you want to do a conservation subdivision? That is partially in a zone that allows. For X number of lots and is partially in a zone that allows for Y number of lots. Nan, do you got a quick? Way to answer that, or is it we got?
Yeah. I mean, that's why we don't like to cut lots in, you know, into two zoning districts, because it does make it more complicated. But generally. The zoning identifies, should identify what will happen to that, and it's oftentimes that the. The density is allowed to be calculated for each part. So if you get. Five homes. Say in the ag rural district, and you get eight homes, you know, in the density that's in the in the the hamlet district, you add those two together. But some some zoning, you know, depends on how you want it. Real some real restrictive. Zoning allows the or permissive zoning allows the higher density to extend. X number of feet into the the lower density, and it gets very complicated. I think. That it's it's, you know, easier just to say that you have to calculate it into two pieces and combine it, and that's how many you get. But the zoning should articulate what you want, so everyone knows what that rule is.
Okay, so so we would need to write a paragraph that explained this, and I guess the the simple way would be you calculate how many lots you can do. And then the 50% rule has to apply to the entire parcel.
Right, it would be right. You would have to, you would, the density would be calculated based on each zone, but it would still be developed as a unit.
Right. Okay, so we would need to do that. The other question I have is concerning this this. Western, excuse me. Yeah, western border. And, you know, having zoning lines running down the middle of a road. Just seems like I I don't know how often that's done. Isn't it usual that the zone incorporates both sides of the roads because you kind of consider that? The that is. They're they're contiguous in a way. They're attached. I I just, you know, I mean, having, I I was out there and I looked at that, and, you know, this is kind of a. Residential speed hill at that part, for all intents and purposes, is kind of a residential road. There's some houses that go down there, a couple of trailers, you know. Both sides of the road fairly equal. I don't know why we would treat one side differently than the other. You know, so I I guess what I'm saying is I I would kind of go back to Nan's original map or Rick's original map on that on that side. Just because it's kind of more conventional, but I don't I don't I don't know. I'm not feeling strongly about that. I just wonder. I mean, the logic for not splitting those parcels into two zones is is. This is good one. I can certainly agree with that.
So so without the additional parallelogram area for future growth along 79, you would just make it a, is that what you're saying?
I I think, Ernie, you're what you are saying, the green area identified by Rick, is that right?
Right, right.
And I think that's roughly what Barb was proposing. Only with a little bit more, because I was suggesting we include all of this parcel at the north end of that set.
Yeah, that that's what my my proposal was, Bill. Sorry, that was.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, okay, great. And I guess I guess what I added was there's a long skinny rectangle that might all as well, all of that might as well be in the district as well. Sorry, Barb, I didn't mean it's still your great idea.
No, that's fine. No, so Ernie, along 79, kind of where 79 starts going up to the left, that whole area. So it's like a couple parcels there.
Yeah, so you're extending it further up Route 79. Yeah, but I'm talking about just the the area to the left. Of Speed Hill Road.
Right, so so what you're suggesting is is the green area.
Right, right.
And my question to you is, would you?
Yes, and I would, and I would.
Would you add it more green here?
For exactly the reasons you.
You mean north of the road?
No, south, south of 79, south of 79, but a larger chunk to the west of Speed Hill.
Right, so you're picking up that whole lot there.
Yes.
All right, if I can pull this off, I'm gonna, you guys keep talking. I'm gonna try to find, I'm finding my PowerPoint diagram. I'm gonna try to edit it and show that.
Yeah, and I would just say, you know, historically, I guess, you know, the sign that says Town and Caroline is right opposite of Flatiron Road. So, you know, we've kind of. You know, incorporated this whole little Toby Town development on the Cecil Keen Lane. Into this hamlet, which I I think makes good sense. Incorporate the cemetery into the hamlet, certainly. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
No, just because at times it's confusing.
Yes, it is, it is, it is. Yeah.
Okay, I can't, I can't tell if Bill is, I think Bill was working on this.
I I'm, yes, I am, and it's, you know, a little. More of a pain to do here, but here we go.
Okay.
And.
Meanwhile, we have a, we have a. We have a motion on the floor from Barb, and I need someone to second it.
We'll second it.
And and I'll change as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Hey, Bill.
Yeah.
If you in the PDF go on the right and click on comment. You'll be able to draw on it.
All right, that would definitely be easier than what I'm trying to do now. So under comments.
Comment. No, go on the right.
This one here?
No, all the way to the right, all the way, keep going down where it says comment.
I don't, okay, what I mean, oh, I think that you guys are covering it up. There we go.
Oh. Uh, there.
I I did comment.
Okay, and then now click the little pencil. Yeah.
Yay.
Now you can draw.
Oh, you are. Thank you. I was trying to figure out how to do that. So that's great. I don't know how big a line is going to draw, but so I think we were talking about doing this. Part here. Is that showing up?
Yep.
And then still down this way?
Yeah.
You need a darker color.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna try to fatten it. I don't know if there's a way to do that. Nan, is there?
Yeah, yeah, you have to go back to where, yep, right there. Click there where your mouse just was. Yep, there you go.
Okay, that should show for you guys. And then if I do, I was suggesting taking this parcel. And then are we still going down here? Like this?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And is there any any change I've missed?
Barb and Ernie, is that what you're thinking as well?
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, that's what I'm I'm. Very comfortable with that. I'm, yeah, that's what I still.
Okay. With that, we have a motion on the floor. Do we need any more discussion? All in favor of this being the hamlet of Caroline, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you. Great. Okay, I am going to now.
Let me stop sharing my screen.
Stop sharing your screen, and I am going to look at the agenda again. And we're going to talk again about commercial areas on 79 that we talked about the last time, which is down off of in the Lounsbury Road area. I don't know if we have a map about that.
Um. Let's see, I can share. This one was as of the end of August.
That sounds fine.
Um.
How's life outside town hall right tonight, by the way? Okay.
I, yeah, so I think this was the last map I had.
Great. So what we were looking at here is adding.
So um, what we were looking at here is adding. These. Uh, these pieces here that are in now in purple. And uh, I would like, does anyone have any discussion about that?
Do we have any new information? Have have any of the people that you contacted uh concerning the?
Have not corresponded with me, no, so uh, however, you know, if we do, whatever we do, we'll have to have another, we'll have a public hearing about. People can comment at that time as well. Um, would anyone like to move?
Yes, I I will.
Entire area.
I moved that entire, yeah, I moved entire area.
Okay.
So so again, just.
Moving that entire area that is in. Uh, let's say it's lilac. I don't know what color it is. These parcels. Yep, those parcels.
And then this plus, right.
Do I have a second?
Second?
That was Ernie, I think. Oh, it's Barb, I can't, sorry, I can't hear. Very well, um, thank you. Do we have any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor about that commercial area, say aye.
Um, hang on, Ernie.
I I I guess, I I guess I'm just, you know, are we not talking about the other stuff over towards Landon Road?
No, just talking about this right now.
So are we gonna do that tonight or some other time? Landon Road area.
We're gonna do that as well. I would like to at least have this a bit of a conversation. Yep.
Yeah, so uh, all those in favor, aye.
Yeah, yeah, aye.
Yeah, all in favor of this area? Here, sort of near Lounsbury Road and seventy nine, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes. Okay, let's go further down the road. Where we had been talking about um. What to do in this area, there was a. A soul that we had been proposed. Uh, that's uh, an owner had suggested. Could be commercial. I'm not sure if we can pick it out on this map or not. Um.
Uh, is the property to the east of Landon Road, south of seventy nine?
Oh, this one?
Yeah.
Yes. And this.
Al- also some on the other side of the road, I think, uh, the uh.
I think also I had talked about this parcel.
The other area was the yellow chunk to the north of seventy nine.
Right.
Between, uh, yeah, uh, yeah, right in, right in there, yep.
And um. Exactly, exactly so. So we talked about this, but we did not come to any conclusions. Does anyone have any suggestions?
Ernie, you were gonna look into this a little bit, that you have an opportunity to do that.
I really dropped the ball if I was supposed to. I have, you know, I don't know what what to say, you know, it's this one of these things where. You know, we have a a landowner who, you know, has not an unreasonable suggestion. But I don't, you know, looking at it, it, you know, seems. Kind of discontinuous uh with other with other. Own, so you know, it's uh. I I guess that, you know, we we. Keep on talking about, you know, the possibilities of other larger commercial stuff. And and uh, the uh, we had the the. Uh, woman tonight, you know, talking about down near Gaggle and doing that and allowing more commercial activity down there. And, you know, I just, you know, wonder if we're just not gonna. Hear this and and continue on where from where we are, or whether we want to continue to to to.
I'm gonna suggest, I would very much like it if we have this map, if this map extends uh to the eastern part of Sladeville. If like, if we might look at the area, because I'm not exactly sure. Um, exactly where we were talking about and maybe someone can point that out to us and we can think about it.
Well, just a clarification on this, that the the um, not all three parcels were suggested by the landowners. Large commercial that um, that area, kind of the low, the of the three red circles. That lower left um circle was not suggested by the landowner. About to be large commercial, so so just keep that in mind. So um, you know, part of the concern with large commercial is that, um, you know, to Ernie's earlier point and question. About um, you know, uh, breaking up zones and not having, you know, similar zones of. Uh, you know, on different sides of the road uh to to me, to put a large commercial in that upper circle. On the north side of seventy nine. Puts it uh squarely uh between two residential hamlets. And um, you know, and across the road from it, from an ag rural parcel. Um, similarly, the the one on the right would put a large commercial kind of smack dab in the middle of a residential hamlet. Um, area. So I guess what what I would propose, if the commission is seeking to make any changes here. Is to change, um, you know, is to is to expand. Um, the boundaries of the Beesmer Hamlet. To um, to not have that big yellow area in the middle separating them, because the Beesmer Hamlet. Does allow uh for some types of business, um, and, you know, smaller commercial activity. It's not, it's not a residential only hamlet.
Um, so Barb has is suggesting uh. Taking the upper circle and that property and also the lower property. At least to some degree. Uh, and putting that in the in the Hamlet, the Beesmer Hamlet.
To be clear, Jean, I'm not suggesting it. I'm just saying that that is an option if the commission. Wants to do something differently than what is up here. That seems uh more reasonable to me than uh calling that large commercial. You know, turning that, turning that into a lilac area seems very inappropriate to me. Given where it's located in, you know, adjacent to other kinds of uh. Of uh, development that's primarily residential.
I mean, so Ernie, in the past, you had argued that a longer than seventy nine wasn't a great residential development area. Um, that's what he said a couple means ago, and I understand, a lot of traffic or whatever, but of course, we have a lot of residential development along with seventy nine. And the Beesmer Hamlet certainly runs along that. So in this case, I don't find that a real strong argument for converting this commercial. But I would be willing to entertain indeed, turning maybe a strip. On the south side of seventy nine, uh, not as deep as those parcels, but something that would allow some development there. Uh, I'd have to look at it. I mean, I, and I did, I went and drove by the field today and I still prefer to to not do that. But um, you know, I I'm open to to looking at that and so this need to have some proposals and some real thought into it.
Michelle, I think has her hand up.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I guess I would go along with, I I would say a compromise would be, as Barb suggested, to have that whole area be part of Beesmer. And maybe allow a little more uh commercial activity in Beesmer. I don't see any reason that that area has to be. Uh, heavy or focused commercial. Um, I, and I think it's weird to have. Uh, focus commercial on one side of the road and not on both sides of the road, because it, as I said last time, I think it really impacts the property values of people. Opposite it. I think people that bought houses along that area, you know, were thinking they would look at a nice. View of farmland, not necessarily commercial. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Michelle, and Nan has her hand up. Yeah, I mean, I just offering another option is, because I don't know exactly what is it, this four corners at seventy nine and North Landon Road. But sometimes at, you know, we have crossroads. Small business development at crossroads, so I don't know if there's an opportunity, I mean, ex- expanding the Hamlet. So it continues is certainly an option, but. If if this is, if this is an intersection that could handle, um, you know, some sort of. Maybe not the same kind of um. You know, focus commercial as this, but a a more of a neighborhood commercial kind of thing that. You know, maybe more like the center um down here. I I don't know, some, but crossroads are, you know, kind of traditional. Development patterns that can develop and that are often emulated in zone, just throwing another idea out.
Yeah, this isn't really a crossroad of repute. Um, you know, you're going straight up Landon Row, which is like, you know, eighteen percent. You know, it's just the.
Okay.
Back there. Um, no, I.
I would say at the moment, I'm very, very inclined to the um, expansion of the Beesmer Hamlet. To allow some commercial activity in this area. But I really would like to um postpone a decision about that until the next meeting so that people can think about this.
It sounds like, Ernie, did you have more you wanted to say? It sounded like you started to say something.
I guess that, you know, if if. Looking along again, I think that it's it's worthwhile to take a look at the entire Route seventy nine corridor. In light of the possibility of maybe having a lilac zone. On the other side of Sladeville, you know, in the vicinity of Gaggle, Larchwood Farms, you know, that area, I don't know. And then, and then I certainly, I I think I generally agree with with Barb's sense that maybe these properties. Um, along seventy nine should go into the Beesmer. Uh, Hamlet as opposed to, you know, kind of being broken up with that, the yellow stripe that through the middle. Just, you know, partially to accommodate. The wishes of that of that particular landowner, but also just to to kind of recognize that this. Is the the prime, you know, it's the closest properties to Ithaca and so. You know, they're they're. The places where development will want to happen.
And and some of the, I think, three of the newest houses built in the town are along. Um, not not in that yellow area, but just to the left of that yellow area on the south side of seventy nine. Yes.
Yes, and a big expansion here at the corner of Beesmer Road. Um. There's a quite a large property now on Beesmer Road and seventy nine, uh, how, I think, which I think is a house.
It is.
Well. Um, okay, let's uh all think about this and then let's go back down to the other end of seventy nine so that we can look at that property. Where was it?
Well, so, yeah, you keep going and does anyone know well enough, Pete, is where 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 Gaggle is? I don't have a good enough sense that I can pick it out on a map like this. Yeah, yeah, I'll just leave it.
A lot of buildings clustered together.
Let's see, we go up there, there's the Pickle Park. I would say right about there, yeah, that's his little pond up there. I mean, it's just up a little past the Pickle Park and then past him, it up the hill curbs and Larchwood, it's there.
Okay, so if you look along with Pete, just if you look along, um, where it says rest area, uh, keep going a little bit to the right of that. Though there's a a wetland area, a water resource area, that's a pond on the Gaggle property. And near the bend in seventy nine, just to the uh east of that is where Larchwood Farms is likely to be.
This year?
Yeah, so I think just a little bit to the left, to the west of that.
Like here?
Yeah, yeah. I think so. I'll, you know, what to verify. He's got about five, I think that's actually, I think that's right, because he's got, uh, the the buildings look right to me, there's several along the road. And then if you look further back, there's another building, that that's what that property developed like. So.
Okay, and Marchwood uh property is on the north side of seventy nine.
Yeah.
But I don't know which one it is. It has.
Uh, Pete suggested right around that bend uh in in the seventy nine there, a couple of properties east of.
This one?
Yeah, somewhere in there.
Not on the south side.
So my guess is, um, there's some prime farmland and there's two structures indicated in it.
Over here?
Yes, I think the western one is probably their greenhouse and the eastern one is the house. I think that's the Larchwood. I think. It's on right peak.
Yes, that, yes, that's correct, because to the right.
Gaggle.
Yeah, that's Gaggle, that's Larchwood, and then, yeah, that's.
Okay. Um, I think that this is an interesting idea. Um. I think it would be very useful for us all to go and look at it in this coming week. So that we have more of a visual sense of what we're talking about. And uh.
Yeah, and I have thought about this on a number of occasions and the issue as we go east in the town is all the wetlands. So on the north side of the road, there's a lot of wetland, but it is true on the south side of the road, if we have a one sided. Commercial area, it might work. I don't know.
You don't have, might not have to go back so far. Is the, is the purple hatching all wetlands?
No, purple hatching is prime farmland.
Yes.
But, you know, there isn't a lot of prime farmland south of the road. There is some, but not a ton.
Okay. And this seems like a good time to um, just talk a little bit about what Pete mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Which was about people not understanding the wetlands mapping. I had gotten one question about that that this week. Or maybe not last week, which I sent out to everyone. Uh, and um, Rick Letterer Barnes responded by um. Noting the places on the town, that, excuse me, on the county's planning department. Um, that shows all that mapping. And then the other thing that is clear is that the um. The flood maps. For the entire county have not been released yet. But uh, he was able to look at some of them that the county had. And there, they have extended some of the flood maps into this area. They're just not all released. Um, and those are the federal flood maps. So I don't, I don't really understand why uh some, there's been some confusion. Um, because I have not been in that situation. I don't have a lot of wetlands on my property and I haven't looked at them. But um, but as far as we know, we are looking at all the relevant maps and that's what's been included in the water resources overlay. Nan, do you have anything you'd like to say more about that? Um, no, I I think that, yeah, these water resource overlays are. Um, it the, it was designed kind of multifaceted, so it includes. Um, it includes the wetlands, it includes streams and the streamside buffer areas. Um, that are not necessarily mapped by DEC or the federal government. Um, but are consistent with. Your comprehensive plan that asks for protection of water quality, so these are all the features that contribute to. Ensuring, um, you know, environmental quality and water quality. What I've tried to explain to people is that the wetland maps um are essentially a guide for people to look at. When they're considering developing or building a house and that they're going to have to have um. The town officer or perhaps someone else um. From the DEC or something, come and look at the property if there is a question of whether it uh, it's, it's in a wetland or not. Is that, would you agree with that? Uh, yeah, I mean, I think it's partly the 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 on the. Object of the overlay is. Is to try and move development that is. Uh, out of those areas, so it's it's a review process, it it triggers a review process. Right. Um, you know, and you're like, just take this parcel, for example, it's got these two little wetland areas. On here, um, but there's plenty of other non-water resource overlay areas in this parcel. That are still open for development.
That are still open for development and, and. You know, it's so that, like I said, the object is to protect these areas. Not to, you know, we're not saying the whole parcel can't be developed, but we need to be more careful with these wetland areas and especially along the streams. These, the water resource area, um, you know, is really important along the streams.
Good, thanks. I just wanted to, um, to talk about that a little bit in case other people are watching who've had, um. Who have questions about this area. Um, so.
Jean, can I add a little bit?
Go, Bill.
So, uh, to be fair, I mean, part of Pete's question was some impression that there's suddenly a lot more restrictions or regulations and. For the, in general, that's not true. So the main components of the water resources overlay are, as we talked about. You know, wetlands, flood zones and, um, uh, streamside corridors, riparian areas. And the zoning doesn't do anything to change the restrictions on wetland development. Those are governed by either the DEC or the federal government. If it's above twelve point four acres, it's a DEC. If it's below, it's the, some branch of the federal government or other. Part of the advantage of the water resources overlay is it puts in one place. An easy place to notice. Now you don't have to go to like the county, not look if there's a wetland. To go somewhere else to see if there's a flood zone, to go somewhere else to see, you know, so that the overlay helps people, you know. Check, oh gosh, there's something you should pay attention to here. And as Nan said, then guide development away from it. But there's no new restrictions on wetland development. There's no new restrictions on flood zone development. The flood zones are what they are. So the, the water resources overlay is not going to change someone's insurance because the insurance is based on flood risk. And flood risk is determined by the federal government. So the fact that it might be represented differently now than before is because the federal government is putting out new maps. The one new thing, it's important to be aware of this, is the riparian zone protection. But the DEC, while it does not require that, strongly recommends riparian area protection. The county strongly recommends riparian area protection. And the town comprehensive plan says, let's protect water quality and that means riparian area protection. So the one new set of restrictions here is on these riparian areas, which is between fifty and a hundred feet from a stream, depending on the activity. And the intermittent stream or not, and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to get clear that the only new thing really. Is a riparian zone, but doesn't mean the overlay is useless because there's nothing new. It really is very helpful. It's like a one-stop shop to figure out, is there something I have to pay attention to?
That was beautifully said. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. That was really helpful.
That was very helpful. Jean, um, Jean, could I make a correction just on the green circles on the map, um, just for the record?
Yes.
We were talking about the old Larchwood Farms property. That's actually to the right. Of where that top green circle is, um, if you move to the right, um, past the hatch marks, right there. Yeah, that's, that's the old Larchwood property.
Ah, okay, thank you. Um, well, that's good to know, yeah, because I, I need to go out there and, and look at this area and. Uh, and think about it, um, and what might be a reasonable place for, um, a. A, a commercial zone of some sort there. And I think that'll be interesting. Yeah, I think you're right because I can see all those, um, because the. The one that's to the most east is the house and then the rest of those are the, um.
Yeah.
The greenhouse, right. Okay, great. Um, thank you. Okay, so I think we have now talked about this commercial areas. Let me look at my.
Jean, I don't have the agenda, um, up on my computer right now, but did you, is it on the agenda or have you guys decided? For the Caroline Hamlet, how you're going to treat that? I know there was discussion about that.
The last meeting, we decided that it would be treated the same way that Caroline Center is.
Okay, okay.
And is everyone still good with that?
Yes, yes.
Yes, good, okay. Okay, so the next, uh, part of our agenda is, uh, the consideration of Article Five. So, um, I think what would be useful is to put up. Nan, uh, either the Word document or the Google Doc. And let's see if there's, and we have just a couple of tiny places of disagreement. Uh, or not, or it's not really disagreement, it's just that they don't exactly coincide.
Okay, um, I'm just looking for Article Five here. Uh, do you want the Google Doc or the Word Doc?
I think the Google Doc, because I think people made a couple of comments in that.
All right, Article Five, it, what part of Article Five?
The hope, we're gonna just do that.
Start at the beginning? Okay, hold on, let me just get there.
Yes, we like it.
All right, let me share my screen. Do you want me to just scroll through it?
Uh, yes, um, let's just start. Because I think if there's any notes, we should come to them. Other than that, I think people have had the chance to read this. Is there anyone who made a particular note? This is Barb says delete study. Yes, okay, so that's. It should just be a pumping test and we'll delete study. Does that seem good to everyone?
Wait, where are we?
So we're, we're on the Google Doc?
It's, uh, section five point one, uh, D.
Yes, five point one, one.
D one.
One.
We have two Ds on this document, yeah.
That should be an E. Good. So all we need to do is put in an adopted date in this E.
Document, this is the top of this. Something else above that, it might be in an old version.
What's that?
Published, you know, a few days ago, so. Um, I'm hoping that we're all on the same page, although.
Yeah, see that, that's, there were several versions of the Google Doc, um. This was the one that. I opened this one up because it had edits from yesterday in it.
I've been using the one that Jean sent out last, you know, five, five days ago, four, five days ago.
Which should be the same.
Yeah, I, I'm confused. There really can't be different versions of a Google Doc if it's the same, it should be the same.
Yeah, it could be the same doc.
Article V on in progress.
Yes.
Yeah, draft B two.
Yes.
It says Town of Caroline zoning law draft B two.
Yeah.
So that's how it starts.
Yeah, so it looks so much different, I guess it doesn't.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we're good, we're good here.
Okay.
Good. So we're agreeing with Barb. We're gonna put in the date adopted. Yep. Great.
Okay. I thought we had spun through this, I mean, there, there was.
Yeah, here's Ernie's thing. Ernie says replace.
Yeah, it's just.
I mean, I read through, I have no problem with the, all the minor changes and corrections.
Started, um, uh.
I agree.
Yeah, so the, the one that I just recently commented on was, uh, on E.
Yeah.
Uh, change of use. Any change of use is defined in the zoning law to a use that requires site plan or special use approval. Shall also require site plan review and approval before undertaking. Why did I?
And then you, and then you said that that final sentence that read, that read.
Oh.
In any hamlet district, a change of use shall also include any significant change in the exterior.
That was what I was complaining about, right?
You said, it seems rather arbitrary to me and unnecessary gives unreasonable power to the review board. I said, I agree, and I suggested deleting that second sentence.
I see, so, so, so the question is, are we going to delete that second sentence?
Right, that's, yeah.
Okay.
I think we're all saying we should delete that sentence, are we?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I'm trying to figure out what the first sentence means because.
Let's get rid of the second sentence and look at the first one.
It says, a use that requires site plan shall also require site plan review, if you just skip over the special.
Well, no, it says, uh, any change in use, that's the key.
I get that.
So that means if you, if you, uh, if you're, uh, like, um, you know, you have a building that's, I, I don't know, um. I, I can't, thinking of an example, I'm just, just say it's a restaurant now and. You're changing the restaurant to, um, a mini storage and that mini storage. Requires a special use permit, then even though it's a commercial building, it still has to go through. Site plan or special use because that's what the new use requires.
Okay, that, that's fine. I sort of assumed that was the case. I didn't realize you had to say that, so that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so we're getting rid of the second.
Okay, I'm just, just so that I can edit, I'm just gonna leave this as crossed out and just, well, I'm, just so we know.
Good.
Okay.
Okay, we're putting in the date, um, Barb, you have any comment here?
Uh, yeah, so just, just, and this is section, uh, A one A. Where it's kind of guidance, which says to aid in the review, the following information shall also be shown on submitted plans. And, um, it calls for farmland soils, field, woodland vegetation and scenic resources. So I was just, just. Asking the question, should wetlands or water resources, however we would want to state, state that. Also be shown on the submitted plan so that, um, the review board would see those on the submitted.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're going to insert number four, which would be wetlands.
I guess, uh, wetlands and water resources.
Okay. Excellent.
So, a, a question for Nan. I mean, I assume that the site plan, I know has its own list of what you have to submit. Um, if there's a conflict, I assume, I mean, they have to do a more complete list.
So this is. You know, we have to go back to what this, this section is. This is development standards for the Ag Rural District. The following standards shall apply to all commercial and remember, we do allow for commercial development in the Ag Rural District. Um. And. You know, that might need to be changed because it's not, it's really. Residential development that is going through review board, not just, you know, a building permit kind of situation. Um. So it's, so it's all site plan subdivision and special use permit applicant, applications shall show. These things, um, yeah, I guess it's, um. I guess it is somewhat, the wetlands and water resources is certainly. Part of a special use permit and a site plan review, so there is some duplication here, which was probably why. I didn't include it in the first place because I'm not sure these first two are part of the normal site plan. List of submittals.
Okay, yeah, because it would seem to be logical that the site plan would say we have to submit for that. The subdivision would say we submit for that and the special use permit says we have to submit for that. So it feels a little weird to be specifying some of those things here to me, but maybe that's typical in zoning law. And I do understand that maybe only in the Ag Rural District do we need a prime and statewide important farming soil map. So it makes some sense, like you say, there's a separate set here. Uh, so I guess that's the answer to you, Barb. I think it's fine to say wetlands and water resources here, but almost certainly that's already caught. When they actually do site plan.
I mean, in, in general, I, I find this whole section to be very confusing because I, you know, I would be reading down through stuff. And then I'm thinking like, didn't we just already go over this? And then I go back and realize that, oh no, we're talking about. The, you know, this district as opposed to that district.
Right. This is, these are standards specific to the Ag Rural District.
Right, so here's what I would say is in A, uh, we might say something like. Uh, in addition to all the things already required in site plan subdivision of the review. They will als, are also required to submit and put a little list here, something like that. Acknowledge that this is not the only place to look for the list of things you have to submit.
But would there be anything on that list?
Well, I think prime and statewide farming soils might be, we should take a look. At this point, we do some hard work. And, and look at site plan, which we've not yet done, so it's an open-ended question.
Right, right. So, so, yeah, so I guess I'm wondering why their site plan review is, is kind of addressed in two different places, um.
Well, I, I, I think because this was, um.
This was.
No, this is some standard specific to the, the, the Ag Rural District and it's. It's, so we're saying that in the Ag Rural District, we want to make sure we know when an application comes forward. We know that where their prime farmland soils or where field and, you know, woodland vegetation on the parcel is. So that when the planning board reviews that, it's included. I mean, is it, is it, um, this list? You could add these to the regular site plan list and if it's not relevant for that. District, they just, they don't need to do it.
Um, I'm okay having it here. I think we should flag this and say, let's double check this against what's in site plan and only include things here that aren't already required. In those other sections.
This, this document reads as if there wasn't a whole section on site plan review.
Right, and that's why I want the words acknowledging saying, in addition to what's required in site plan review. These additional things are required in the Ag Rural District. That, that would make it clear, I think.
And I, and I'm willing to bet there are no things that are not in site plan review that, that we would need to add here. So I'm kind of wondering whether a lot of this can, can be kind of edited out as, because it's just redundant.
Well, we'll have to deal with site plan first then, I think.
Right.
Back to this.
But I really, let's, uh, I like the suggestion about, about, um, let's go back to that for this section. But let's, at the end of this, I hope we can say that aside from that, we love this section.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that this part here. Is very different than the first part of this paragraph. The first part of this paragraph is really saying in site plan subdivision and special use permit applications. That are going before the review board, we want to identify the building envelope for the new structure. This is kind of, I don't want to say extraneous, but it's additional information to help do that.
Okay, so let us mark that and then go on. Yeah, I lost something there and I don't know what it was.
Okay, I, I'll have to go back and look and see what that was.
So this says Ed Caroline, uh. And we've just approved it, so we will add that.
What, what, what?
On the.
We just have a new hamlet to add to the list.
Right. So, and I, my notes were very bad in this area. What do people recollect?
We skipped page six.
There were no comments on it.
Yes, there was. There's a sentence, there's H.
Yeah, Nan's gonna look into that.
Oh, like, okay, all right, okay, sorry, I, I wasn't, wasn't sure where you were. Okay. Okay.
And then B, we're adding Caroline.
Yes, okay, good.
So the question is, what do you want to do about number three?
I think we left this, my recollection is that we kept this as permissive, but I think Barbara's notes showed that we deleted it. Barbara, do you remember this?
Um, I, I remember the discussion and, and my memory of the discussion was that we deleted it. Because the sentiment, uh, was that it was, um. Uh, too wishy-washy for the review board to rely on the review board's opinion, um. And again, you know, what we're, what previous discussions have been is that we're trying to be as explicit as we can for the review board. That, that's my recollection, which could be wrong because I, I don't have written notes.
No, I think, I think you're right, um, I think you're absolutely right. I, I just, my notes were not good and I did not have a chance to go back and. I, I just, my notes were not good and I did not have a chance to go back and, uh, listen to the tape. So let us accept Barb's notes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, are people okay with that?
Just to delete it entirely?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course. But I mean, you could, you could leave out the, the part about the review board's opinion. Um, and just leave it, you know, sidewalks, it may require sidewalks to be installed when there can be in a connection to an existing adjacent sidewalk system or an existing pedestrian sidewalk system. Leave it at that.
So what would you like to do?
I would, I, I would like to move that. I would like to move that we change this just to, uh, that the review board may require sidewalks to be installed when there is where a connection.
Can be a, yeah.
Pedestrian sidewalk system is adjacent to the property.
Okay, to an existing, should be to an existing pedestrian sidewalk system when there's one adjacent to the property. Is that what you're saying, Ernie?
Yeah, I think that's it. It's just, you know, I mean, better planning would think about the possibilities for, you know, a future sidewalk system on the adjacent property as well, but I think that that's probably not a big deal here in Caroline. We have a few sidewalks and if we could expand those, that'd be great.
Okay, and this says pedestrian system. I think you wanted pedestrian sidewalk system.
Um, yeah, I think it, pedestrian system, just kind of a little too vague. I think sidewalk kind of indicates that there's actually some infrastructure.
All right, so that's the motion is to keep the first sentence, is that right?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, are all in favor of that?
I'm.
The I?
I.
I.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you. This is where there's figure NN that I think Bill has uh, worked on, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I made it. I don't know, I don't know if I have it to show on this computer.
I think you've all seen it.
Yeah, that, that is in the war, in the, in the word document that, I don't know why it doesn't show up here, but it is in the document.
Yep. Okay. Okay, and, and this is, let's go back, uh, to the beginning of this, so I'll know where I am. I have no idea why something is ringing like that in my ear. Uh, so this is about the riparian buffer area.
Yeah, I think this was the word that we added. Replacement, because it originally said replacement of existing wells.
Right.
And that got, we added in the, after Bill looked into it, we added in septic wells.
Um, yeah, I think Ernie has maybe better language.
We had some other language, uh, dry wells, septic dry wells is what we.
That's right.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, one word.
Dry wells is one word?
I believe so.
Okay. Okay, good. I, yeah, thanks. That is all Article Five now.
No.
Is that not wonderful? So with those few things that we need to find, which are a date, and I think that bit about that will refer to, um, site plan review, I think we have achieved Article Five. Is everyone happy with where we are with Article Five at the moment?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah, subject to review of that one section in the Ag Rural District.
Okay, good. So I am, um, I am, we are, uh, we are as a group, we're good with Article Five. Good, yay. Thanks. Uh, so Article Six, uh, let us go on with Article Six then.
Article Six is, um, supplementary standards. Um, so this first section is general for, um, remember, we split this up into standards that are required versus guidelines that are encouraged.
Right, exactly.
Um, and we had gone through each one of these fairly, I think these, um, have been gone over.
Yep, I just want to see what the comments that are left are. Um, this was, I, all billboard signs are prohibited. Um, Bruce wanted them allowed. I think we voted about that. My memory at the moment is that Bruce and I opposed prohibiting billboards and all others supported that. That's absolutely what, and I would, did go back and check that. So I think that's right. So we need to include that. I just wanted to make sure that we know that. Is that everyone else's memory?
What, what?
I'm, I'm. Basically, that line is in there. All billboard signs are prohibited.
I, I am at the bottom of page sixteen. All billboard signs are prohibited. Yes.
Yes, okay, so we can get rid of that, those comments then. Because we had that discussion, okay?
Yeah.
Um, yes, and Nan, I think that's right to, to get rid of that crossed out part. We need to put in the period. Okay, Bill. Oh, we're hunting noise.
Sorry, it was, at least that's, it was not lined up in the right. We're down in the home occupation section is where the next comment is.
Okay.
So a lot of that is old comments from before. I think where we're at now is to move noise into site plan review so that it's done on a case by case set rather than a generic all home businesses. So that means we would delete B and, um, down at a minor, we also have to change some wording that refers to noise. And I, obviously, you know, since minor home occupations are permitted, that means there will be no noise regulation of minor home businesses because they are permitted by right and don't go through any review. So I'm sure we were aware of that.
Okay, so, um, so we get rid of that six B.
Yeah, I, I, and I moved that.
Yep. I think that can go away, so that's fine. And the writing in, in B is, looks to me correct now, is that correct?
Uh, which?
Um, down here.
No.
I, I think you have to get rid of that part of it, right?
Yes. Uh, the, the sentence starting with however, I think goes away. Because it can't say home occupations also meet the noise requirements because there aren't noise requirements. Or is that referring to site plan? It says sixty-five, five, one, which is not right.
Um.
Six, five, one?
Six, five, one.
Six, five, one.
Okay. So.
You've taken that out.
That's right. So that sentence needs to go away. Exactly.
I'm just gonna highlight this again, just for my own purposes for now, to make sure I get them all set.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I think that's fine. I don't know why it's in brown, but I think it's fine.
Yeah, I don't either. Yeah, these are just numbering issues. I'll fix all of those.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that just was moving it in so that we're consistent with how we call these things. I just moved it over here.
Okay. We have to put the battery law number in as well.
Oh, has that passed yet?
No.
No, okay.
Oh yeah, Mark, sorry if you're in there. I guess I dropped the ball on, on, uh, reading guys' comments, sorry.
Okay, then we're up to subdivision, six, five, eight.
So this one is, um, basically saying that, um, it's just a reiteration. The first sentence is just a kind of a reminder that the subdivision law and the subdivision regulations must be met when there is a subdivision. It's just a reference, just like we've done all of these other references. This is just a reference to the sub- existing subdivision law.
Right.
The second sentence is gives the instructions that as the later section will talk about, unless you change your mind, that all major subdivisions shall be designed as a conservation subdivision. And then if that were to occur, section six, five, twelve is the
Right.
where that is taking over, so.
And we, we have voted to include conservation subdivision, so.
Yes, but, but we made them optional in the hamlets.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Bill.
Bob, go ahead.
As required in the Ag Rural District, but optional in the Hamlet districts.
Yes.
Uh, no, they are optional, not maybe optional.
Okay, okay.
So these are numbers, um, this was, I think we discussed this.
Yeah.
This was back to July when Bruce asked about why farm worker housing doesn't count towards residential density on the parcel.
Right.
But I, you know, I think that this is a benefit to leaving the language this way. This is a benefit to the farmers because otherwise they're gonna have to have all the lot sizes and dens- or the density the right, you know, to have farm worker housing. And, and generally, that's not what you want to do for being farm friendly.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with leaving it in.
Do we, do we have any farm worker housing?
Very little, I think.
That's not to say that you won't have it at some point.
Right.
You know, I mean, what is this typically, you know, the farmer puts a trailer over on the, you know, far corner of the lot there.
Right.
Right.
But the reason this is in there is because when it's not in there and someone complains and says, oh, you know, they should have done a subdivision or they should have, you know, they need a bigger lot for the farm worker trailer, that's what causes problems. So this is clarification that we're not counting farm worker housing towards density.
Yeah, I, I guess I would just assume that most of the time it's just an accessory building. Um, you know, or the second house on the lot as opposed to, you know, being subdivided and, you know.
Yeah, that's, we just want to clarify that. Believe me, there have been lots of, lots of issues over this one, lack of this one line.
Yep.
I, I don't mind keeping that line in there, just for the record.
Oh, no, no. Curious.
Okay.
Um, so I think this was I don't remember if this was discussed. So the reason that this is in here is that multifamily structures are commercial structures. And so they, in my opinion, that's why I added it in here was because they, they should go through site plan review and meet commercial design standards so that they fit into the community.
I'm okay with that. The, the, again, the vast majority of multifamily units here are converted houses. Is there any conflict there? I'm not, not remembering the commercial design standards well enough um, to know, but does anyone think that's a problem? I understand if you're designing a apartment building from scratch, we would want those to apply. Uh, is this gonna cause any issues for someone trying to just use a house?
Well, you could say that single-family residential structures converted to multifamily must retain, you know, the, the single-family you know, usually, I'm trying to think of words that, because I know Ernie doesn't like the aesthetics, but.
Well, I was more just worried about, does this prevent someone from doing that because somehow these commercial design standards are a real reach for someone converting a house? Uh, that's the end of the question.
Yeah.
I get your end too, which is maybe we want to stay looking like a house. I think people usually do.
Um, you know, I would say a strict interpretation of this, you know, I, I'd have to go back and look at, I'd have to go back and look at what those standards are. But yes, I, I think that someone could go off the deep end here and, and say, you gotta have it, you know, whatever. I think that a single-family house converted to multi should still look like a single-family house. That's what most communities hope for. But I don't know, you know, if you wanna, if you wanna be sure we, we don't over restrict those conversions, you should say that.
If you make a, a single-family home into a two-family home, does that count as a multifamily or is it just one?
No, the three or more.
That's what I thought, okay.
I think I'm okay with the language that just stands here. I will probably ponder it some more, but maybe I'll.
Well, I, I have a question about the green, uh, rating there. Are we taking that out? I'm not, I'm not sure why multifamily dwellings would, or developments would need to abide by conservation subdivision.
So think of, um, think of the Boysville cottages. That's what that's referring to.
I understand that, but that's a huge multifamily development, um, and, and this says all of them, I think. And so like if you have a, you know, a five-family development, I, I'm not sure why conservation development, why conservation subdivision would pertain, you know, especially if it's in Hamlet where we said that they're optional. I, I guess I'm just not understanding the reasoning there.
I, I think it does pertain to the bigger ones.
Well, we might need to make that clear. I mean, it's, it's only redundant, but we could say if they meet the threshold of a major subdivision, because of course.
Well, these aren't, this wouldn't be a subdivision. Just like Boysville cottages is not a subdivision.
Right, 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 right.
So it, I would say that I agree with you, Barb, in that it's not all, but it's certain ones that reach some sort of criteria, either by number of units or number of acres or some, some criteria.
All right, yeah, we need that criterion there.
So is that criteria, um, a number of units?
Could be.
Or.
Yeah, we're not really talking about, you know, like a house converted into four units. Um, or, you know, of just a, a couple of buildings, you know, you have one lot that's got two, two, four-unit multifamily dwellings on it, but we're, I think we're I, I originally was thinking, you know, the scale of something larger than that. So I, I agree that this is not all.
And, and maybe something like the number of buildings. I mean, I, it's a little weird, like, if you build a large apartment building of a hundred units, you know, what do you do with that? But I think what we're really talking about is the landscape littered with a bunch of buildings, and that's when we'd want the conservation subdivision to kick in so that you keep, you know, open space as much as possible. And I don't know what the number of buildings is, but to me, it probably is related to the number of buildings, not the number of units. Because we have limited units, there's eight.
Right, doesn't it say that, um?
So maybe this first sentence should be by itself. That's true. All multifamily developments shall require site plan review and special use permit pursuant to, it's actually not articles. It, it's really pursuant to the use table. Because we've identified. Because we've identified, I'd have to go back to the use table. The use table tells us what needs a special use permit or not. Um. So.
And, and then a second sentence or a second point that says
Yes.
some developments of greater than X. To design a conservation subdivision.
So we, that, something like that.
Yes, I think that seems reasonable. Let, let us think about what that X would be. So let us consider a multi, a multi-unit development, like a townhouse that would have three and something like five buildings. Would that make sense? What do people think?
Well, that would be five lots, right? I mean, if it were, if it were subdivision, um, that would be, you know, kind of the threshold for a major subdivision. Um, but it seems rather large. I'd almost say three.
Three units or three structures?
Three structures. Because at that point, you're really, you know, starting to have enough stuff going on. You know, you're gonna have, you know, twelve cars and, you know, so there's gonna be parking issues and landscaping issues and everything else. Probably, you know, need to talk about that a little bit.
Okay. So I'm hearing three structures. Does that seem reasonable to people?
I'm, I'm okay with it. Three, four, or five somewhere in there. Three's fine.
I, I'm okay with three.
Okay, let's leave this here and go on. I think that sounds good. Um. We got rid of D. That was agreed to, so that can, that's fine.
We have previously talked about the density allowing for higher density for multifamily development, so.
Yeah, that, that's all been decided.
That's all been discussed. These have all been discussed before.
Yeah. And I think we were happy with them. Okay.
I'm just looking at Ernie's recent comments.
What, 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 what were my recent comments? What?
Uh, you added in base, um.
Oh, okay.
Base residential density.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, just, it was unclear how that was calculated or something. I don't know. I just, uh, the, yes, base residential density shall be, yes. Old residential density. What does that mean? Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
That of the base.
Yes.
So, you know, formatting things I will fix. I'm not going to worry about them in the Google Doc right now.
Yeah, language things I throw in, formatting things I ignore.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we had talked about all of these.
Yep.
Here's one from Ernie. Let's see, where is that one?
Isn't this already addressed in, uh, it's the seven twenty-nine, September twenty-six, twenty-second one?
Yeah, this one.
Yes.
Isn't this already addressed in one A above?
Which, which one is that? I'm trying to figure out.
Maximum number of dwelling units in a multifamily dwell development shall be triple that of the base.
Uh, no, Ernie, because there's, there could be additional density bonuses for being energy efficient or other things, right? We have a whole list. Not, not nearly as generous. And it's in article three or four, four, I think. There is a density bonus section.
Right. This is not the same thing as this.
Right. And, and those density bonuses are not nearly as generous as the triple that we have here. They're more like.
Right. Yeah, that, right. So, you know, given that originally, uh, this was added in before you changed this density. Maybe you don't want to allow a density bonus for multifamily anymore since you've been very generous with your your density now. You're doubling it or tripling it if they have deed restricted below market rate affordable units.
I guess I don't have strong feelings either way, because again, those weren't huge bump ups and they did encourage certain things like age-friendly or energy efficiency, but I can go their way on this.
But are we inadvertently doubling the benefit by having it in two places? I mean, right, I, yeah.
Well, again, there's other benefits more like you get a ten percent or fifteen percent increase. Now, there's a question of order. I don't think it doesn't matter because you're multiplying, but uh, right, you get double just because you're multifamily and you make them energy efficient, so you get ten percent. So now you're getting two-point-two factor. Something like that. So I don't think it's a huge difference, I guess, what I'm trying to say.
Okay, all right. I'll believe you.
Um, I think, you know, we talked a lot about wanting to, so really support affordable housing, so.
Right.
Ernie has uh, replace ensure that with ensure that, oh, because there's two of that.
Yeah, two of that, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Limits on the number of dwelling units per individual structure and instead recommend that newer approaches to zoning should not include limits on the number of dwelling units per individual structure.
Well, I, and I, I understand where that's coming from, but uh, this is a rural area and we're trying to meet different goals in a rural area to ensure that structures that are built are consistent with this intensity and scale of a rural area, not an urban area.
And I think, um, a lot of, uh, social scientists would also tell you that giant buildings in urban areas have become, are often disastrous. You know, buildings with two hundred apartments in them.
You know, I mean, we limited this to eight or put it at eight on Barb's recommendation based on, I think we're looking into various things. And the recognition that saying, say, two or four was probably uneconomical to, but something like eight seemed to be economical, but yet safe sociologically at least. Uh, so, I think eight is good. It could be six, but on every day.
I think, yeah, I think we had enough discussion about that, that we can point to. And, um, Michelle had commented about water and septic. Um, you won't get, uh, you know, you won't get a permit, um, for the septic if the health department doesn't think it can cover it, right?
Right. And that's just kind of a given for everything.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I think, yeah. I think Ernie's comment there is just a numbering thing. In September, go on.
So on I, on page twenty-four, item I. Adequate buffers between vehicular areas and residential uses to accommodate sidewalks to the building separated from parking areas shall be provided for. What does that mean?
It's, uh, it basically means that, so this is, um, let's see, we're still in the section of, hold on, I gotta go back. We're still under multifamily developments. So it's basically saying that you want there to be enough space between buildings um, and parking areas so that there's enough safe space for sidewalks.
Okay, so.
It's not very artfully written, I guess.
Comment in there somewhere.
Yeah, this one right here. You were unclear of the intent here.
Yeah, I couldn't quite figure out what, what we were after. Um, so put sidewalks between the building and the, the parking.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I guess it should, if, I mean, in H, sidewalks shall be provided to connect residential units. Uh, maybe that's enough and we could take I out.
Yeah, that would work.
Yeah, let's do that. That makes sense.
Yes.
Okay. Good. Okay, I think we were fine with I or L. I can't remember which. Good.
Um, Michelle was noting there was a comment there, but I don't know what it is. The yellow on buffer areas shall be used, was the comment.
Um, this one here.
Okay.
Yeah, so again, my comment there had to do with what happens in town normally, which is you're converting a house. Now, usually those will have buffer strips, right? I mean, a house normally has a little bit of landscaping around it, so maybe we won't have to worry about this. But again, it's one to make sure we weren't preventing someone from taking a house and making the three apartments.
I don't think so, are we?
You know, and the modern building code is so restrictive about that now. It's just, it's not going to be happening very often. Um, it's all this fire separations and stuff. It's just a nightmare.
And it does say does not apply to adaptive use of existing buildings, so that would cover that anyway.
Okay, all right, good.
Okay. Okay, conservation subdivisions. We have gone through this area this pretty carefully, I think.
Well, that's my first.
I think you already wanted to get rid of carefully.
I want to get rid of carefully.
Yeah, I, I agree. That, that's, again, propaganda, I think, designed is fine. Has been designed with exceeding care and the utmost of caution.
With scalpels and tweezers.
So this was where we stopped, um, the last meeting, or, well, I don't know. No, we had one more meeting.
We had another meeting on eight-thirty, so we got on. We just, we can get rid of that.
So we've gone through all of this then already.
Yes.
Things.
Yeah.
I think we had gotten up to what was that?
We were working on the order, the priority order of stuff, and maybe we got all the way through it. I just don't remember.
Uh, yeah, that's right. That was.
I thought we had had that all figured out. I was surprised that it was not.
Yeah, I think that was because that's where we ended. And I remember talking about that you wanted it reorganized, but I had no notes that articulated exactly what order you wanted them in.
I think you are correct.
That was down, um.
In some kind of a priority order, but.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, it was this one, the site design criteria.
Yeah.
Because they're listed in the order of significance, and I, I think that I stopped there because I didn't really have a clear idea of what your, what number or what order you wanted them in.
All right, so I had made it some proposals, but of course I don't remember them. Uh, and I may have notes somewhere, but not with me now.
Well, your, your note actually had, had.
Oh, good. Oh, good.
Where, what page are we on now, guys?
Thirty, thirty.
Ah, yes, there is. It says, um, suggest making one and two. So if you click on, right into the top of the screen now, click on that, suggest making these one and two. So we moved them. Maybe, because this one says one.
Oh, right. All right, maybe I did move them.
So something just happened. I do a back button. It looks like something just got deleted. It goes where, wha? Yeah, I don't know. Something might have gotten missed when you copied and pasted or something.
Let me go back down to Oh, I guess I, I don't know what I did. So this is the order, one and two.
Yes.
Let's see, how many of them there are? There are thirteen of them. So I think what you, what you need to do is get me the order that you want these in. So we have on the least fertile soils away from the farm. Um, buffered. Least traction.
We worked in this last meeting, and I don't think this necessarily conforms to that, but maybe it does. And I will try to, this has been last meeting. I'll try to listen to the recording.
Okay.
Unless somebody remembers.
No, well, I, I was confused by, it was very quick at the end and I didn't have a good, good grasp of what everyone wanted.
Okay, so let's see if we can find that in the notes, um. Bill, are you going to try to do that?
I, I will volunteer to, to listen to the minutes because it should be right near the end, so I'll listen to the recording.
Thanks.
So, um. I think this is where we stopped because I don't believe we have gone through these.
Yep. Okay. Well, that, what, what makes me happy about this so far is there's very little places that we, I mean, we can just neaten this up. We have good general agreement through here. So the, now on to open space standards. And. Owned in common included as a preserved non-buildable part of one or more house lots.
Yeah, I'm okay with how that's worded. Was there someone who had a concern about that? Or is it Nan's notes saying that she did?
Yeah, I think this was a, I think there was an original comment that I, this was, you copied my comment.
Right, okay, so I think that's, reads good to me now.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure why these are in your name, but with my note on it. I don't remember.
Be, because, uh, these were comments didn't get into the Google Doc that were in some.
Oh, right, right.
So I copied them over so people had your wisdom.
Okay, gotcha.
So I think, I think we're all happy with the common driveway. I think we know what they are. Okay.
So I think there was maybe, um, I forget who it was. Someone had a question about what a single, I think it was this one, what a single loaded street is. Basically, when you have a street with the houses only on one side. And, and they're, they're done oftentimes, you know, if there's a view or something, you know, some, you know, significant natural feature across the street that the houses are just on one side looking at that.
Right, might be a pond.
Yes, right. So Ernie commented on, so this is now still in, um, how the open space in a conservation subdivision is protected. And it's generally through, um, as we talked about here, uh, an easement or a deed restriction. Um, and this one is, um. Um, and this one is, um. It says a registry with the plat, with a review board and a plat note. A registry is really just. Um, a list of. Properties that have a conservation subdivision on them with, you know, how, where and what the. Open space is preserved as. Um, I think the more important piece is that. The plat note, when the conservation subdivision is done, and the open space is identified and then preserved. Having a plat note so that all future landowners in, in, know that that has been preserved and that there's an easement. It's just really to let everybody know that there's, this is where the fifty percent open space was. So you can call it a list, a registry, a record, a file, whatever you wanna call it.
Well, it's just that you're, you're calling out for a registry, and there's like, you know, there's no registry. You know, somebody's gonna make one, somebody's gotta kinda set this up. I, I agree, certainly the plat note is where all this information belongs. Do we really need to, to have a separate file full of this stuff? If it's on the plat?
You, you could have it in, in the minutes, uh, or in the approval, um, resolution of the planning board. Or just leave it as a plat note. That's what people in the future are gonna look at.
Yeah, I mean.
I think it's Ernie's arguing, and honestly, I have no idea, so I'll take Ernie's advice on this one.
Well, I just, I just, I'm looking at it as an administrative hassle, you know, somebody, you know, we created a registry. Just by this one word on this page, we've recreated a registry. If I'm a developer and I'm coming in and I'm saying, okay, where's this registry? Like, the code enforcement office is gonna look like me, like, what registry, you know? Um, you know, so, so let's, let's either not have that word there. Or let's create the registry somewhere. I mean, and maybe the registry is that same list. That we have of, of all the, you know, the number of lots that each lot can be developed when this thing is passed.
Right.
You know, I, I mean, yeah, I'm just trying to avoid, uh, embarrassing moments, uh, in the future. For some poor administrator.
Well, I think the key point is, is there a use or need for something separate from a plat note? And I said we don't know nothing about real estate to know whether that's the case.
Well, the, the, uh, you know, if the, if the. You know, I mean, certainly the question is gonna come up. Um, when a, you know, a proposal for a, a conservation subdivision is on the table. Um, okay, what's the history of this property subdivision? And that should be on the deed or the, you know, the survey or the whatever, you know. The document that the owner is giving you, if they don't have it, then you ask for it. Um, you know, I don't think the town needs to be keeping records of this separate from what the county's keeping records of. Yes.
I will, uh, use an example. We had that conversation about. I forget the name of the road that's in the middle of Slaterville Springs, um, that there's been some development on. And what happened there? Um, and do you know what I, do you remember what I'm talking about?
Fuller Lane.
Is it Perkins?
For Fuller Lane.
No, Fuller Lane, Ernie's right.
Yeah, so. I, I'm not sure how anyone would be able to look that up right now. So the question that I have is, how would someone, for instance, in the town be able to find that?
If there was a subdivision, it would be recorded in the, in the, in the county clerk's office.
A- and it is, so I looked, there's a subdivision map for the Fuller Lane Development. And there is a note on the end saying this area reserved for future extension of the road, uh, attached to the final two parcels. So you have to go into the clerk, basically, you know, you can get to it, some people it's online, but go down to the. You know, assessment office and find that.
And so.
So I guess I would ask, um. The members of like Tim Murray and, um, others on the town board to think about, is that sufficient for your needs? And if there's anything else that is needed, let us know, and we will try to insert it in this.
Yeah, I mean, plat notes would, would usually, you know, in, in. Have things that would refer possibly to other documents, like, uh, a set of covenants and restrictions on the.
Right.
Or something like that. Um, but, uh, but the plat notes could easily contain, okay, this property is, you know. Uh, are allowed these further subdivisions per lot, you know, law, blah, 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 um, so.
Well, I would just take out registry and just leave a plat note.
Yes, that's what I think.
Okay, good. Fabulous, we will do that. Plus, it also makes a set sense to only have one place where notes are kept. Because if you have two, they're likely to disagree with each other. Over time, right? Okay.
I can see the whole thing right now, so four right now just reads a plat note.
Yes.
And I have to see whether the thing above that says, like, here's the places to record this. Is that what it says?
It says, um. It should be depicted and noted on the site plan through one of the following methods. To be approved, proposed by the applicant and approved by the review board.
Okay, perfect, that's good.
Great. Okay. Okay, this goes on to about HOAs. The applicant shall have in place an agreement acceptable to the talent ensures that open space is not approached upon in the future. Okay, and then Ernie says, if that's the case, what does eleven B just below refer to?
Hold on, I gotta go back and read this. So this is the homeowners association. Um. Having, as part of their homeowners association, has to have a maintenance, uh, agreement acceptable. And eleven, what was it, eleven B? Says failure to adequately maintain improvements. Is a violation of the zoning law.
Yeah, so you had had a comment on the side that said, don't misunderstand the word maintenance here. It doesn't mean mowing or this or that, it means keeping it in perpetuity. And, but yet, I'm coming down here and I'm seeing adequately maintain any improvements. Um, and I kind of, you know, I mean, if we're, open space presumably is self-maintaining.
Uh, Nan, get me, is it possible that one could have a pavilion in an open space area?
Yeah, or a trail, you could have a trail. Or, you know, it, it could have, uh, it could have any non-picnic areas.
So that would be the improvement, and so you have to maintain that improvement. You can't let the structure fall into disrepair. You can't let the trail overgrow too much, that kinda thing.
Can we, can we kind of include something that's like maintenance of any improvements as opposed to maintenance? Which kind of implies that somebody's gotta keep the.
It doesn't maintain any improvements.
Yes.
It says fair to actually maintain any improvements.
Yeah, does.
Okay.
Very prescient of you, Ernie.
Well, I just look at it and say, oh my God, what do, what do I gotta do? You know, it's like, you gotta prune all those trees? Do I have to?
Well, that wouldn't be an improvement.
You have to go over to my house and do it.
No.
So you're alright with that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Alright, um, did we miss anything here?
I don't think so.
Uh, let's see, I was asking about two access ways, um. Am I, am I not on the right, problem is there's a disconnect between the comments on the side and the, and the, the.
Yeah, they don't line up good, I know.
Yeah, you have to click on the comment to figure out where it is.
Yeah, so this one goes with. Oh, this is just a rewording. Um.
So.
You talked about. Yeah, I'll fix the, the numbers. Um.
So, and somewhere in here, there's a discussion about roads.
Roads, uh, let's see. Roads, that was up further, um. Common driveways, streets, driveways and trails.
Do you mean the reverse curve stuff, Ernie, or what are you talking about?
I, I, you know, it just seems.
Page, uh, thirty-two, Ernie?
Is it number thirty-two?
The streets, driveways and trails, that section.
No, I have, I have a comment about are two accessways required anywhere else in this or any town. Town and Caroline law, seems an odd place to insert this, if so, I don't know. Is, I can't, I can't find it. I clicked on it, but.
Oh, here.
Highlighted, oh, okay.
I got it, number nine on page thirty-one.
Bottom of page thirty. To minimize, uh, 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 new intersection, it should be minimized. Although two accessways into and out of subdivisions containing twenty or more dwellings are generally required for safety. Proposals for more than two entrances and others should be discouraged if they would unnecessarily disrupt traffic flow or unduly impact the environment. Yeah, I just know that, uh, in some other municipalities, they actually require two accessways. And, uh, so, I just wonder if there's any. Town and Caroline highway laws are, are pretty scant, um.
Yeah, and I'd have to look up the, the major subdivision section of your subdivision law may have something about accessways. I just would have to look it up.
I mean, I don't know, I guess that was a rhetorical question, that doesn't matter.
Well, well, Tim has something, and then I'll follow up.
Okay, why don't we just highlight that and see if we find anything?
I thought. I was just gonna add, I was just gonna add that, that some of this access stuff I know is covered by. Um, by fire code. And so that if there aren't two accesses, the road has to be a certain width, if there's more than one dwelling on it. I researched it some time ago, so, so I think some of that's covered just by. Local fire code, however the guts written in it.
Covered that character, I mean, is that actually written down? Or it's, it's been more my experience that it's kinda like you take your plans down to the fire chief and you say, what do we gotta do here? And they say, well, my equipment, I need a ninety-foot turning radius or a hammerhead of this size. Um, but otherwise, it's actually in a regulation in the town where they've got all that information kinda written down.
And Ernie, I'm, I'm not sure my memory isn't clear enough whether I read it or heard it from a fire official, so I'm just not sure.
There's a state law, I don't, there's any kind of state regulation, maybe, maybe.
Beth Harrington shared, uh, it's, uh, from the New York State Building Code, so it's, it's driveway. Relations, um, that, it's the height and width required in. If you're over five hundred feet, you need a turnaround, so, so. She provided that for our code office to provide.
Okay, alright, so we got something on the boards, yeah, okay.
So would you feel, would you feel better to just end the sentence after safety and just say two or?
This is again, more a rhetorical question than anything else. I'd leave, I'd leave that as an.
Okay.
Well, but what I do wanna ask Ernie, I mean, it says are generally required for safety, I think you were on to saying that there ought to be two. I was a little unclear on what you were.
Well, I, I, I'm kind of cavalier about these things myself, so I could care less. Uh, as long as there's some provision to get the equipment out of there once you got it in there, um, but, uh. No, I just, I just wondered if there was anything in the books.
Uh, I made a note, I think we should look at the town subdivision law and see if there's already something in that for major subdivisions.
Okay.
There might be something already on the books in the town subdivision law for that.
I don't remember anything.
Alright, so we'll, we'll continue to look into this.
Okay.
So we have gotten down through, um. I think we have gone through all of this.
I think so too. Yay. Okay. So, uh, we have now. Finished Article Six, except for the few things that we're gonna look up.
Isn't, isn't one more question there about car washes?
Yeah, there's car wash in these, these two comments here.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it just seems so funny to me that we go through this, you know, long involved thing about conservation subdivision. And all of a sudden, boom, we're talking about car washes. It's like.
No, this, this whole section is a supplementary standard, so.
I know.
This was.
You would, you, if you were coming into the zoning office to, to, you know, find out whether you could build your car wash. You would have to read the entire freaking document before you figured out that you had this whole subsection devoted to you. Um, so it just, it's, it struck me as odd.
Well, we can move it before conservation subdivisions, if you like.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, why don't we take car wash and lodging and move them both up higher before the long conservation subdivision section?
Cause otherwise.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So, uh, I don't think we should go on to Article Seven yet. Um, I just wanna check with everyone that, um, what I make, what I think we are, where we are is Article Five and Article Six are very much set. We have a couple of things we need to look up and agree upon, but other than that. They are, they're at least set in, let's see, it's not stone, it's, uh, paper mache, has that? Good?
Okay.
Michelle has her hand up.
Yeah, Michelle?
Well, uh, so, so are we reopening the discussion about conservation subdivisions?
No, I just really wanted to say to people that I still have some thoughts about it, but I, I think you're right, we voted on it, and I think what we should do is. Go to the public hearing and see what people have to say.
Because, I guess, did you see Bruce's email to you earlier today?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
I've taken a vote, we are indeed meeting that.
Sounds good. So, um, um, before we end this evening, I wanna say that the next thing we have to do is site plan review. And then we have Articles, uh. Eight, which is non-conforming uses and structures, which is not very much, I think it's about two pages. Um, Article Nine, um, which is enforcement administration, which I think Nan has basically told me is pretty much. You know, it's like boilerplate, right?
Um, hold on, let me just go back, where we missed special use, did we? Um. So, yeah, there's Article Eight, after site plan review is the special use permit. Chapter, and that one is all of the process and the, um, legal end of how you do a site plan. A special use permit is laid out in state law, so the real meat of what, I mean, you should review that and read it. But I'm not sure that the bulk of it is much that there's a lot of discussion on, except for Section eight point nine. Which is factors for consideration and conditions, that is. Um. The meat of what you want to review locally, so you wanna pay particular attention to eight point nine.
Okay.
Okay.
Note that, so Section eight point nine, factors for consideration and conditions. Um, in non-conforming uses and structures, as I said, this is about two pages. It's not very much.
And I think what I had said about Article Ten, which is enforcement and administration, is. Um, and I don't know if you have a new building inspector yet, but those are generally reviewed by the building inspector. Inspector to make sure that they have the tools that they need to enforce the law. So they usually have, you know, review it and say, oh, you know, you don't have X in, or, you know, this isn't clear. Cause they're the ones that are gonna use that section. So I would have your building inspector review. So I would have your building inspector review, um, chapter, article, um. Ten, and have him, him or her come forward with whatever they have to say. Now would be the time to do that.
Okay, Tim, can you put that along? Thanks very much, that's great. Uh, and then we have the zoning board of appeals, and I think the big decision there is how many people do we have on the zoning board of appeals, right?
Yes, it's, it's all laid out, that is kind of boilerplate directly from the state authorizing legislation.
So we just, I think it's either usually something like five or seven, is that right?
Uh, three or five.
Three or five, okay. So we just have to decide if we have three people we really don't like or five people we really don't like. And, um, and then the review board, we already have a review board, so this is.
Well, so this was because. It was unclear, you had formed your original review board as part of. Uh, it might have been the subdivision regulations, it was part of another law. And you never really fully articulated how the review board will function. In consistent with the rules for a review board in other places known as a planning board. So this is, um, again, um, draws mostly from the state. Legislation on what a planning board is authorized to do. Um, how they do it, how membership is chosen, how the chairperson is chosen. In the operating procedures of the planning board or the review board in your case, so. You know, you should read it, but I'm not sure there are any, there might be surprises to the review board if you haven't been acting. In the way that they should be, but this articulates what those operating procedures should be, in my opinion. So that it was just not ever articulated this way before.
Okay. So, uh, and then we're, we have, uh, the amendments and how those are done, and then the terminology section we've already done. Um, was in the old one. So, um. What we will do the next time we meet is, uh, we'll see if there's anything to catch up on here. We'll go back to those. Couple of places on Route Seventy-nine that we were discussing. Um. And we will go on, we will go on to site plan review, so please review, review, site plan review and special use permits and read those. That's about twenty-five pages and add any notes if you have them. And, um, I think then, uh, today is nine twenty-seven. In October, we would normally meet on the second. And the fourth Tuesdays, we have missed at least one meeting in here because of this. Scary, scurriness. Does anyone want to try to meet next week as well? Is that possible for people? In November, we can't meet on the second Tuesday because it's election day and I think we should not meet that day. Because.
Um. I suggest we actually meet every Tuesday in October.
Okay.
That's me, and that's probably to make up for the missing, the November one and the missing one we just had. Um, but depending on the repercussions of whether we can be in cars or not, uh, I certainly prefer to be out here in October than November. Um, but once, once, once we have quorum present in the building, that may ease up some of the requirements for being out here, so. But anyway, that's a very personal thing and I'm not gonna make everyone else come here every week.
I will, um. I will send out an email then to everyone looking at these next few weeks and see who's available. I know that Ernie's gonna be traveling. I think Bruce will be back. And I will be back by the end of this week. So, um, good. I think we made a lot of progress tonight, uh. Is there any, oh, I had one question. Someone asked me about abattoirs. And whether they were mentioned. Um, and.
What?
It's a fancy word for a slaughterhouse.
Exactly, but it's, sounds so much nicer, really. Uh, and I said that I believe that an abattoir would normally be on, um. Farmland and would therefore be an allowed use under ag law, right? But the question was, well, what if it wasn't on farmland? What if it was? I don't know, in a commercial district, I guess. So.
We didn't have that in our use tables?
No, we have, um, I'm just looking at it now, we have. We have one for food processing on farm. Um. We do not have. Slaughterhouse and we don't not have, no, so it's, it is only listed in the use table as food processing on farm.
Okay, so I think that we should, um, think about that. And talk about that when we meet at the next meeting, about where we should allow. Um. Food processing that is not farm and Nan, it would be great if you had suggestions of. Uh, if we need to, I mean, maybe we need to divide abattoirs out of what I would think of as food processing, meaning. Paning. It's a different use, okay?
Also, what are you gonna call it?
We're gonna call it an abattoir.
We're gonna call it a slaughterhouse.
I mean, we do, there are certainly people in town who process deer, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know if those are all on farmland. I, I don't actually have any.
Well, there is, there is, to my understanding, a slaughterhouse. Being developed, I believe, but I think it's.
Farmland out the, out by that playhouse, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, so that's farmland. What about the Bob Spencer's place? That's farmland.
Well, it's not really on farmland, it's as part of a farm operation.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say. It's not where it's located, that the farmer owns it, it's, is it part of a farm business?
Okay. Okay, that's the only other question that I've had someone bring to my attention recently that I haven't been able to answer, so, good. Um, thank you, everyone. I will be in touch with an email, uh, tonight or tomorrow and, um, I will be returning to the States very soon. Cause it seems that hurricanes are following me, so.
Yeah, you, you have a trip to Florida in a couple of days, right?
On behalf of the town board, I would like to express my deepest gratitude to Michelle and Bill. For hanging out there as we watched the darkness descend upon.
Exactly, exactly so. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Being here. Hi, everyone, talk to you soon.